To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all. I kinda missed Brian's flag. Your tours out Scott?
I was gonna get it out, but I, I think it's still a forty-eight star flag.
You're a little, you're a little slow if you're getting it out now.
Yeah, thank you succeeding from the, uh, rest of the country. Uh, at this time, we'll have the, uh, in the optional prayer invocation by Councilwoman Showerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no greater deed than the one done for others. Let me always be willing to give of myself as you give to me.
That's beautiful, uh, to, to reflect on. Uh, roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Smith is on the other line. May I do that for you?
You most certainly can.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Clear?
Yeah.
Mr. Rastatter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Showerman?
Here.
Mr. Shank? Oh, and Councilman Chairman Horton?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've reached the hearing of the public part of our agenda. Uh, if you've called ahead, you would have been allotted five minutes. Uh, if you're just speaking, showed up to speak today, we will allot you three minutes. Are there any citizens desiring to be heard at this time?
I was asked to unmute, so does that mean I'm called first or?
That means, yeah, that means you're up.
Okay, this is Freda Tepfer, and do I need to give my address or that's just for city council?
Uh, we'll take your address as well.
Thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street Erie, Pennsylvania. Um, so I was, I, it's a couple of things I want to mention. I was appointed to the, um, oh, so you can get to look at me. I was appointed to the, um, Erie County Human Relations Commission Advisory Committee by the City of Erie. So, um, I have, I'm not totally sure why exactly the Human Relations Commission's reports to the county council, but I understand that you are now considering changing that back to where it was prior to two thousand eighteen. And so I would agree that it is appropriate to have the Human Relations Commission, function similarly to many other boards, commissions, and as, as was pointed out to me recently, this is a ju- uh, quasi judicial body or judicial body, and should not necessarily be supported, uh, supervised by the county council, nor should have its staff support supervised by the county council. So, that's one of the things I wanted to mention. Um, so I understand you have two, um, items on your agenda, and I hope that you will pass them. Secondly, I just want to encourage you to look for opportunities to divest investments that the county has either in pensions or whatever bonds and securities they have to renew out of investments, excuse me. In, investments they have in, um, fossil fuel development and, um, just divest from fossil fuels and more towards, um, sustainable investments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tepfer. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing or seeing?
Hello, yes, good afternoon.
Hello.
Good af- good afternoon, President, President Horton and County Council. This is Shontae Poyum Brown, Chairwoman of the Erie County Human Relations Commission.
Hello, Ms. Brown. You, uh, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Well, good afternoon, President Horton and County Council.
Chairman.
I understand dialogue, or Chairman Horton, I'm sorry. I understand dialogue had been shared during the Finance Committee's meeting this past Tuesday, proposed by both President Horton or Chairman Horton and Solicitor Talarico, that our Human Relations Commission ordinance under Article Five, Section C, C Three, be changed back to its original intent and consistent with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, allowing us to function as an independent governing body. I was pleased to see this being discussed. I received information from our state office that out of four hundred HRC offices across the Commonwealth, a commission not having its own independence is very uncommon and should be totally outside of politics. The commission has tried for two years now to operate properly under the change, but unfortunately, once some accountabilities and requests were made of staff by the commission, we faced opposition, disrespect, and internal conflict. A meeting was called by Doug Smith several weeks, months ago to address our concerns and issues, but as of date, I have not received any feedback that any of our concerns were addressed, resulting in any outcome. However, by granting the commission independence to hire and manage our staff, I believe is the first step in the right direction. Moreover, my main purpose of speaking today outside of the ordinance change, meaning immediate attention, pertains to the dialogue between myself and our HRC director during our August commission meeting, where I raised a concern with the issues of commingling attorneys during our fact-finding investigation and adjudicatory process. As I shared with the director, this is a lack of due process and unethical practice. I requested that Director Loeb discontinue his plan to operate in this manner, but he stated he will continue to do so. This information was also shared with me.
Ma'am, Miss, Miss, uh, uh, Poyum Brown? That's kind of a personnel stuff if you wanted to speak with council about, uh, you know, pu- job performance and personnel, I think it would be better served in a, in a different venue.
Okay, thank you Chairman. Um, I, I would like to reclaim my time. Um, and I also did send a case, um, for council to review. That case would be the Georgia Pacific Corporation versus the Reading Commission on Human Relations, document number one twenty-eight. Um, secondly, um, most importantly, um, in conclusion, the commission has brought issues to the attention of county council that ensure that the office will be held accountable, um, is granting its clients their right to due process, and properly and effectively of forcing its ordinance, which all were previously overlooked. Uh, therefore, allowing the commission to maintain its independence is the best practical way to move forward. According to feedback from Solicitor Talarico during last Tuesday's meeting, um, he was stated that the recent change of our ordinance may be deemed as unlawful. And also, we received an opinion from Solicitor Perhat, quote, nowhere in the state law is counsel authorized to select his commissioned employees, unquote. The commissioners have managed under the change, but for this office to thrive and ensure the ordinance and bylaws are being enforced the correct way, that will ensure accountability is granted to commissioners and dependents.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman Horton.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Are there any other citizens desiring to be heard? Any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing or seeing no more? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our October sixth regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilperson Showerman and Anderson. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Call for the question.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. The county executive has indicated that there will be no report from her office tonight. And so we'll move right to Chairman Clear of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Finance Committee met on Thursday, October fifteenth. And, uh, for today's meeting, we'll be presenting old business item A, new business items A through W, as well as items, uh, items Y through D. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma- Madam Chair. Uh, we'll hear from Chairman Rennie from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, October fifteenth. I am bringing item X for the agenda this evening, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rennie. Um, uh, at this time, um, I think, uh, Council Vice Chairman Anderson, uh, is going to present a citation. How would you like to do that?
Yep, tha- thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a citation, uh, tonight uh, for, uh, Police Chief, uh, Richard Chopin of the Cory Police Department. Uh, I'm not going to read the citation. I'd just like to make a couple, uh, comments uh, about the citation, but would ask that the citation be placed in, uh, county council records for posterity. Uh, but, uh, but Buddy Chopin, uh, and I, uh, grew up together, uh, we played baseball on the Kiwanis Club, uh, team at the, uh, Anthony Wayne League, uh, the Hammer Mill Fields. Uh, and I know Buddy's family, uh, his parents and his older brother, uh, Rob, uh, they, uh, lived and grew up on Rosedale Avenue, uh, which for those who, uh, don't know, Rosedale is a, uh, one block long between, uh, Seventh and Eighth Street, uh, from Reed to Wayne. Uh, and so- several families on that block, uh, are, uh, old friends of mine, as, as well as I know, uh, in conversation with Chairman Horton, uh, friends of his, uh, families as well. Uh, and, uh, for thirty years, Bud Chopin has served the Cory community as both a police officer, uh, and now, most recently, will be retiring on October twenty-fourth as chief. Uh, I, I know Bud to be a very, uh, conscientious and, and active, uh, member of, uh, the Cory community. Uh, and, uh, and Bud and I shared, uh, uh, many, uh, great moments together, uh, both uh, in sports, uh, with learning sportsmanship and leadership, uh, as, as well as, uh, times of, uh, defeat. Um, but always, uh, took that in stride and, uh, a part of, uh, I believe, uh, what Bud is and who Bud is today, uh, comes from his, uh, commitment to, uh, athletics and to his community. And we wish him, uh, the, the best in, in all that, uh, he pursues moving forward. Uh, and together, uh, we as the members of county council, uh, will put forth a resolution on tonight's agenda, uh, declaring October twenty-fourth, the day of his retirement, uh, as Richard Buddy Chopin Day in Erie County, uh, honoring his service for more than thirty years, uh, to the Cory area and to the citizens of Erie County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Uh, I want to thank you too for, uh, I know you do it for historical purposes. We joke about it a lot, but I want to thank you, Carl, for, uh, for always being so thoughtful and bringing those citations, though. They're important. If you, if you haven't had the chance to take a citation and present it to someone who's lost a loved one, uh, or, uh, it's really something special. So if you have a citizen in your district, uh, and, and I think we're all worthy, but if you have someone that you wanted, uh, lavish some special attention on. Carl has set a great example on how to do that. Uh, don't start visiting, uh, uh, all the funerals like Mayor Tulio used to do, though. I draw the line there. We're moving right along. Uh, next up is old business. Uh, Mr. Smith, maybe you have the second reading of ordinance number seventy-four and title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number seventy-four, twenty-twenty, approving a single vendor contract with Westlaw to provide legal research platform for the Erie, for the county law library.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Vice Chairman Anderson and Councilwoman Claire. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question.
On ordinance number seventy-four, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Scott, you're muted.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
And I forgot, Mr. Anderson, sorry, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you.
It will move to new business item eight on your agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to, um, uh, amend the agenda if I could, please. Um, I would like to move items A, B, and C to second reads. And, um, I would also like to add Resolution Fifty-four to the agenda as double E-E. Um, this is a resolution to declare October twenty-fourth, uh, retiring Cory Police Chief Rich Buddy, um, so Chopin, uh, Day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Claire and Vice Chairman Anderson, uh, to amend tonight's readings on A, B, and C, uh, to second readings as well as add double E, uh, Resolution Fifty-four to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing or seeing no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
On the motion, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Now, that was the motion to amend. Uh, Mr. Smith, would you, uh, please read ordinance number seventy-eight and title only, please?
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-eight, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty general fund budget, waiver of the purchasing code to transfer ownership of fourteen-year-old specialty bomb squad vehicle to the City of Erie Police Department.
So moved, second.
You guys are quick. So it's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Showerman and Councilman Anderson. I get that right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, we'll call for the question.
On ordinance number seventy-eight, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. May I have the second reading of ordinance number seventy-nine, Mr. Smith, and title only?
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-nine, twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty cares fund budget revised expenditures of two million nine hundred seven thousand and three dollars and new line items for rebudget of prison wages and fringes for July through September.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Vice Chairman Anderson, Councilwoman Claire. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, call for the question.
On ordinance number seventy-nine, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. May I have the second reading of ordinance number eighty, uh, and title only, please, Mr. Smith?
Second reading of ordinance number eighty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of two million nine hundred seven thousand and three dollars and new lines for grants to eligible volunteer fire companies and the County Convention Center.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, we'll call for the question.
An ordinance number eighty, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. May I have the reading of ordinance number eighty-one and title only, please, Mr. Smith?
A first reading of ordinance number eighty-one, twenty-twenty, repealing ordinance one oh four of twenty eighteen, which amended ordinance forty-five of twenty eighteen. Article five, section C three of the Erie County Human Relations Commission, and amending ordinance forty-five of twenty eighteen, article five, C three of the Human Relations Commission.
May I have the read, first reading of ordinance number eighty-two, please, Mr. Smith?
A first reading of ordinance number eighty-two, twenty-twenty, repealing ordinance number one oh five, twenty eighteen, which amended Article two, section five, four, three, C five of the Administrative Code, and amending Article two, five, four, three, C five of the Administrative Code of Erie County.
I have the first reading of ordinance number eighty-four. Is it eighty-three?
Eighty-three, yes, sir.
Yeah, eighty-three.
Mr. Chairman, this begins the, uh, seventeen or so budget ordinances. Shall I just roll through with?
Yes, please.
All right. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-three, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one debt service fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-four, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one employee fringe benefit fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-five, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one health choices fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-six, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one mental health, intellectual disabilities fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-seven, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one drug and alcohol abuse fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-eight, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one children and youth services fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number eighty-nine, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one planning and community development fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one domestic relations fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one library fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-two, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one public health fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-three, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one public safety fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-four, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one gaming fund budget. A first reading of ordinance numbered fu- ninety-five, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one liquid fuels fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-six, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Pleasant Ridge Manor operating fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-seven, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Pleasant Ridge Manor depreciation reserve fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-eight, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Erie County Care Management Budget. A first reading of ordinance number ninety-nine, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one general fund budget. A first reading of ordinance number one hundred, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one real estate tax levy.
Okay, so those are all first readings and those are all, uh, budgetary items, which we'll, uh, get to soon enough. Uh, item X is the, uh, possible appointment of Jeff Pinsky in Fairview Township. I'll entertain a motion. I went ahead and read that off of Mr. Smith's plate, but I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Jeff Pinsky.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilperson Showerman and Anderson. Any discussion?
I would like to say a few words.
You want to say a few words? Great.
Yeah. Um, I just want to say that Mr. Pinsky, um, has a long history of dedicating his time to Erie County, and he wants to continue giving back. Uh, he came very highly recommended to me, um, not only from people within my district, but from outside of my district also. And he's looking forward to serving in, in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Showerman. Roll call, please?
From the appointment of Mr. Pinsky, Mrs. Clear?
You did. Jimmy.
Thanks, Scott. Oh, my gosh. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Uh, do you guys want to do all these par- parcels together as one? That would be from item, what, I, um, agenda item Y, uh, all the way down to double D.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would make that motion from X to double D as one, one motion?
Why, why to double D?
I'm sorry, why to double? No, no. Oh, yeah, why to double D? Thank you.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Councilman Anderson and Clear. Deal with all the ordinance at once. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please?
On the sale of six parcels, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Item double E, uh, was amended.
Mr. Chairman, to, just to clarify, uh, we, was, was that motion to, uh, to vote on them as one motion? Do we then have to vote on the motion altogether, or did we do that at the same time?
I think we did it at the same time, uh, parliamentarily speaking. You would be right. We would have voted to amend, uh, and then voted. Uh, I think we just handled it all in, in one motion.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is item double E. It's add-on. It's Resolution number fifty-four. Read that, Mr. Smith. Did I get that? Did we get that? Thank you, just, just, I'm sorry. Swift, do you have that?
Do. Would you like it? It's not very long. Resolution fifty-four, twenty-twenty, declaring October twenty-four, twenty-twenty Buddy Chopin Day in Erie County, whereas Chief Richard Buddy Chopin is retiring after serving the Cory Police Department for thirty years, whereas Chief Chopin worked his way up through the ranks, serving as a corporal and lieutenant before becoming chief in twenty-twelve. Whereas Chief Richard Buddy Chopin has committed himself to serving citizens, creating warm, lasting relationships between the Cory Police Department and church and civic organizations throughout the city, earning the unending respect of the people he has served. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council for the County of Erie that October twenty-four, twenty-twenty is hereby declared Richard Buddy Chopin Day in Erie County.
So moved.
So moved. Who's seconded? So moved. Who seconded?
Me.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Vice Chairman Anderson and Councilman Rastetter. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments if I could. Uh, I know we discussed this earlier in the meeting, uh, and you know, uh, we, we always, uh, can tell, uh, when, when in someone's life, uh, we, uh, know somebody or have been, become an acquaintance to them, uh, as people have nicknames or go by different titles. Uh, I'm sure that, uh, some people just know him as Chief, uh, and some people, uh, may know him as, uh, Richard. Uh, but I go back to the days when, uh, he was known as Buddy or Bud Chopin. Uh, and, uh, and I'm honored, uh, that Bud has been a, a friend of mine for well over forty years. Uh, we began playing baseball together at age of ten, as I had mentioned, uh, for Kiwanis Club, uh, where we learned, uh, sportsmanship and the love of the game by such coaches as, uh, Coach Bilske and Ken Honard, uh, and Barry Cruz and, uh, and played on the same team, uh, as people like Kevin Cooper and, uh, Erie County's, uh, own, uh, Kerry Cruz, uh, who, uh, works for the county now. So, uh, uh, you know, we have, uh, great memories, uh, as many of us do from our childhood, uh, and I'm, I'm proud and honored uh, that Bud has, uh, grown to serve his community, which has become Corey for the last thirty years, and, and I know that, uh, he will continue to serve, uh, the greater community in, in his next endeavors, whichever those might be. Uh, but nonetheless, all of Erie County, uh, is blessed and honored, uh, to have Bud Chopin as a, uh, a citizen uh, and a taxpayer here and, uh, someone who's dedicated to raising his family and committed to his community. So uh, I'm honored, uh, that we, uh, declare October twenty-fourth, uh, Richard Buddy Chopin Day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, um, Councilman Anderson. Um, call for the question.
Resolution fifty-four, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Um, our next, uh, finance and personnel meetings are scheduled for Thursday, November fifth at four P M. And our regular meetings following Tuesday, also at four P M. The general public is invited to Zoom and uh, see democracy at work, uh, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Great job, y'all. Let's, uh, take five and, and, uh, relieve yourself, get you a drink of water. And we'll come back and, and, uh, start our budget stuff.